Ms. Rell, are we up and running now on the stream? Okay, thank you. All right, we're all at the table. Well, then, welcome, everybody, to our special committee of the whole on Monday, February 20th. We're holding this meeting following a regularly scheduled council meeting to address two specific issues. This is a more informal meeting than council. We'll be just talking about things in a committee format. In fact, I should take off my chain here at this point to designate the fact that we're in an informal setting. So I'll do that. We also start the meeting by just acknowledging that we are holding this meeting on the traditional territories of the Coast and Strait Sealish people, specifically the Lakhuangans, speaking people known today as the Songhais and the Esquimwalt First Nations. Their connections to these lands continue to this day. And for all those watching at home and here in the audience, these are live streamed, but also archived for future viewing over the website. So with that, we have item number one on the agenda is the Housing Needs Report, which was here once before, under the offices of Mr. Anderson, Director of Building and Planning. We have a report in front of us, and we are just having it back at this table for consideration and recommendation to council. Mr. Anderson, I will let you kick us off, and then you can introduce other staff or our guests moving forward. And as a committee of the whole, just for those in the audience being aware, we will be having a series of questions back and forth from the committee, and we will open it up for public comment after we go through that process. And we'll do each of the public comments related to each of the two items, one by one. Mr. Anderson, welcome.
Thank you, Chair, and through you. So as council knows, the Housing Needs Report had been drafted and brought forward to council at an earlier meeting, and subsequently, direction was given from council to look at some issues associated with the report, but also to conduct the open house for the Housing Needs Report, which we have completed. So this evening, we have our consultants here. We have Marina Josephovic from Urban Matters, as well as Matt Thompson on the laptop. And so we've got our resources here, and Deborah Jensen, leading the project associated with the Needs Report. So with that, your worship, I think we'll offer a presentation from Marina and, I think, Matt, and go from there. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Josephovic. Oh, we need you to, sorry, we'll help you with that. We'll give you a microphone, so people in the audience and people at home can hear you.
Thank you. I might forget, so if I need some prompting when I switch to Matt.
Perfect, thank you.
Please just prompt me. Good evening, Mayor Murdoch and council. Thank you so much for having me here again. So you guys know me. My name is Marina Josephovic. I'm a housing and planning consultant with Urban Matters, and I'm on the team that's been involved in preparing this Housing Needs Report. And I have my colleague, Matt Thompson, the Community Housing Lead with Urban Matters, who's the project lead for this project here by video conference, because he just had the birth of his third child occur last week. So he wasn't able to be here in person, but I will just flip the mic over so he can introduce himself, because he hasn't been here before.
Thank you, Marina, and thank you, mayor and council. Can you hear me okay?
We can perfectly, thank you.
Perfect. Yeah, just a brief introduction to myself. My name is Matt Thompson. As Marina said, I'm the Community Housing Lead for Urban Matters. And a big part of the work that we do and are currently doing is Housing Needs Assessments for communities across British Columbia, as well as in Alberta and Saskatchewan. So I'm really pleased to be able to be here, at least virtually. I apologize that I can't be there in person. As Marina said, my daughter was born six days ago, so I'm still very much at home trying to support and be around. So thank you for your time this evening, and we look forward to the dialogue.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thanks, Matt. And so just a little bit of an agenda for this will be a brief presentation. I'm going to recap, do a very brief recap of the project and the intent of the Housing Needs Reports. And then the main purpose of this presentation is to summarize the report updates that we've made in response to the direction from council at the Committee of the Whole presentation in December, and then also to report back on the feedback we heard from the community open house in January, and then obviously be here for any questions that you might have. So just to refresh everyone's memory, the provincial legislation around Housing Needs Reports was introduced in early 2019. So in response to growing housing challenges across the province, the government of B.C. introduced legislation requiring local governments to complete Housing Needs Reports. And the intent and purpose of these Housing Needs Reports is to help communities better understand housing needs to inform their planning and decision-making. This report, and the basic Housing Needs Report and the one that we've completed, was not intended to provide policy recommendations to evaluate trade-offs of different housing forms or assess impacts of housing development. And I do want to emphasize that, because that is, was a question that we heard from the community, interest in, well, what happens next? But our report specifically did not address those questions. In terms of our process, the project started last July 2019. The Housing Needs Report's requirements require the collection of approximately 50 different types of data, which we did. We collected, summarized, and analyzed that data. We also looked at some additional data sources where we felt it would have been useful. So that was done in midsummer and fall. In October, we held stakeholder workshops with a range of stakeholders, including educational institutions, nonprofit housing providers, neighboring municipalities, and First Nations to understand more globally housing needs and trends that were being witnessed. We did our analysis and key findings and presented a draft report to council in December, where we received some requests for changes to the report, which we did, in addition to completing a community open house in January. So we're back here today to present those changes, as well as the community feedback. And the final report package that you will have received includes the full Housing Needs Report, as well as an executive summary of the key findings, the summary form that all local governments will have to complete once they are finished with their Housing Needs Reports, as well as an appendix that you'll see of lots of different tables of the raw data that specifically addresses the data required to be collected by the Housing Needs Reports. So in December, we received two primary pieces of direction from council to correct a typo or an error in the calculation of a graph on the CRD income distribution. So I believe it's figure six on page eight, which we've done. And we were also asked to just review other graphs and statistics, just to make sure there were no other such errors. There was also a request that we add definitions of terms used, recognizing that a lot of the statistical data has very specific meanings attached to it. So we also added a glossary at the back of the report to provide those definitions, and also within the report where there were opportunities to clarify terms, we did. In addition to those specifically requested, we made a few other additions to the report, just recognizing we heard some questions and comments during the council meeting, as well as during the community open house. And so we just wanted to provide as much clarity as we could. So we added additional information on the provincial requirements for Housing Needs Reports, both for the data collection and engagement. We updated the language for the seven key themes that represented the key findings, just for clarity. We added information on council strategic priorities into the report, just to provide some context. We highlighted differences in the custom data set versus the publicly available census profiles, because that is a question that we've received not only on this project, but in other communities. That is just a bit of a quirk with these Housing Needs Reports, is that the custom data is a little bit different than those publicly available census. So we just provided some clarification. We, in December, we talked about whether there was information about mortgage-free households, so we were able to provide, collect that information. As of December, CMHC had not yet released data on the primary rental market for 2019. That data became available in mid-January. So as soon as it became available, we did update the document, and that was presented at the community open house. There was a question about clarifying the numbers of recently constructed homes and how those numbers from B.C. housing and the building permits at the district reconciled with census figures. So we did provide some additional clarity there. And then, of course, we completed the community open house and integrated those, a summary of those findings into the report. So what I want to do is just draw some, your attention, just to a few pieces of key additional data that were specifically inquired about. So there's a question about the number, or the percentage of Oak Bay homeowners that have a mortgage versus that don't. So that percentage is 40% of Oak Bay homeowners have a mortgage, compared to 56% of CRD homeowners. So obviously, that's quite a lot lower than the region overall. And when we look at other data, for example, the percentage of people who move in Oak Bay, we know that there's less movement, and people are in their homes longer. So that data kind of aligns with that. There is also a question of looking into gender and lone parent households. And so this is a statistic that's similar in many other communities, but 78% of lone parent households are headed by female parents. So there is a gender component to it, and also reflective of the lower incomes of lone parent households. As I mentioned, CMHC made 2019 data available last month. And so we looked into that data and updated all of the CMHC graphs. But I do want to call attention to the two key pieces we look at. So the vacancy rate, the primary rental market vacancy rate for Oak Bay fell from 2.2% in 2018 to 0.2% in 2019. Curiously, average rents decreased despite that. So from $1,316 per month average rent in 2018 to $1,236 per month in 2019. We don't know necessarily the details behind that trend, but those are the trends that are being seen in Oak Bay.
Sorry, just for clarification, that was CMHC data?
CMHC data, yeah.
If I could ask a clarification on this page?
Sure.
Thank you. With respect to 40% of Oak Bay homeowners having a mortgage, I presume this also includes those that have a line of credit. That's, because the line of credit is often set up as a mortgage, so they're often included together. So like, for example, for my house, we don't have a mortgage, but I have a line of credit, so I presume I would be included in that.
I'm actually not sure. I would have to dig into, we would have to contact Statistics Canada to know that detail, yeah.
Thank you.
But thank you for the question. And then, in terms of the community open house, we held a community open house January 22nd of this year, from 5:00 to 7:30 at the municipal hall, with the purpose of sharing the results of the Housing Needs Report, offering an opportunity for community members to chat with us, to chat with staff at the district about the findings, and to provide written and verbal feedback on the report. It was advertised through the district's website, through the local newspaper, and on Facebook and Twitter. There were approximately 50 community members in attendance, which is a pretty high turnout for a report of this nature. And 27 comment forms were received at the end of the night. And that actually includes a couple of emails we received directly after. Some people prefer to email their feedback. The report includes a more detailed summary of themes, and I know the verbatim comments were attached as an addendum to, in the agenda. But at a very high level, we heard some key themes, kind of, that came up over and over again, that I wanted to summarize. So we heard people ask about the need for more diverse housing options to accommodate the needs that were in the report and that they were seeing around them. There was interest expressed in higher-density developments to align with those community needs. And people expressed concern about the limited housing options in the community for different sectors of the community that they were seeing. We talked at the community open house about seniors looking to downsize, but we also talked about young families looking to move to Oak Bay or move into larger homes as their families grew. But at the same time, we also heard concerns about housing and what it might do to Oak Bay's community character. There's a really strong feeling in the community of maintaining Oak Bay's community character, and we heard that in the comments. And again, reflecting questions about what comes next, there were some concerns expressed about the implications of the report on zoning and other bylaws and policies, recognizing that our report doesn't go into that, but there were a few comments received related to that. And with that, I'll summarize with kind of next steps for moving forward with the Housing Needs Report. The findings largely support the direction council has taken regarding housing in the strategic priorities, as well as in the OCP. And as I mentioned earlier, the Housing Needs Reports are intended to provide baseline information to support future decision-making, including OCP policy, new policies, and development approvals. And I'll just end with a note that these reports are intended to be updated every five years. They're meant to be living documents that change as circumstances change, and that as additional, new reports are created in the future, it is recommended to consider the timing in relation to new census data, just to keep the report as current as possible. And with that, I will turn it over to you guys for any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Are there questions of the committee to either of our two presenters or staff? Councilor Bray sweet?
Thank you, and thank you for your report and for being here. And congratulations on the new baby. I have a couple of questions in regards to numbers. And I'm hoping that I've got this incorrect, and that I can't do math. However, I'm looking at the key findings, which I believe is on page around five or six. And there's two charts there. One says households in core housing need, and the other says households in extreme core housing need. And when you're looking at the numbers, I think the first line is correct, where it says all households in planning area. And then the next line, which says of which are in core housing need. And then the next line says of which are owner households. And then it's the next line that I have a little bit of difficulty with, and I'm hoping you can tell me if I'm looking at these numbers incorrectly. We'll use the 2016 numbers in that first chart. So there's 7,390 households. And out of those 7,390, there are 675, which are in the core housing need. Out of that, which 220 are owner households, and out of that, which are 455, which are renter households. That's fine, but when you look at the percentages, I'm wondering why it says 27% for the, of which are renter households? I don't understand. And to me, when I did the math, it should be 6%.
Yeah, thank you for that question. The reason is, and perhaps this is, could be fixed with a footnote, if you think it would be helpful, but 4% of owner households are in core housing need, and 27% of renter households. So the reason the numbers are different is because there's a very small percentage of renter households. So even though that 455, so 27, that's 27% of all renter households are in core housing.
So can you tell me how you got that 27%? So, because I would say that you're taking, when you look at the 220, I understand how you get the 4%. But when I look at the 455, I don't understand how you get the 27%.
So the total number of renter households would be approximately three times that 455?
If I may, they're percentages that are taken, they're based on different totals. So different totals, renter households. And then you go, the next one, the core housing need, that's based on the total in core housing need. So those percentages are, you don't see the totals there? It's not, not the total households across the top, if you're looking at that.
No, so the total households across the top is 7,390. The next line says of which are in core housing need, 675, correct? The next line says 220, of which are owner households. So if you take 220 from 675, you're left with 455, correct?
Yes.
So then why, if it says 220 is 4%, why does it say 455 is 27% rather than 6%?
Sorry, that 4% isn't out of that 9%? Sorry, I'm...
Then... If we look at the total number of households, they would be divided up into owners and renters. There are about, I forget the exact number, but about 1,600 renters in Oak Bay, and then the remaining households are all owners. So for those two bottom lines of that graph, 220 is divided only by owner households to achieve that 4%. And the 455 is divided by about 1,600 to achieve that 27%. So those two bottom lines are calculated only in reference to their own total owner or renter household group.
Sorry, if I may. Sorry, if I may, through your chart, so that doesn't make, I mean, that I I understand what you're saying, but when you look at this graph, that is not what is what it what it should what it says in this graph, in my humble opinion, because I spent two hours trying to figure out these percentages and could not come up with that because nowhere does it say that you're basing it on the sixteen hundred, whatever it was that you said, there's sixteen hundred renters. So I think that's really misleading, because I look at that and I go, well, if it's four percent of our owner households and twenty-seven are renter households, wow, that's a huge difference. But then I look at the other numbers and I go, well, no, that's incorrect. So I think that somewhere it has to say that it's based on a different calculation or a different set of numbers, because it's still, to me, it doesn't make sense to do it in this way, because I I don't know if I can, I I I don't know whether I believe that number or not. Do you know what I mean?
I may have a I may have a solution for it, which is, I don't think it'd be very hard to add two lines underneath the all households to put in total of rental households, total of ownership households, and then those numbers would line up to those percentages much more clearly.
That that might help a little bit, yeah, because right now, to me, it's just very misleading.
It's hard to get percentages when those base lines of numbers aren't included.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment.
And then the on- the only other thing I'd say is that in the next box down, I think there's an addition error, there's where it says in the for 2016, it says three hundred and twenty-five, of which are extreme core housing need, but when you look at the two numbers below, it actually adds up to three hundred and thirty. It's a small.
Can I?
That's actually due to Statistics Canada has a randomized rounding algorithm. So in small data sets, you don't always get them adding up perfectly. They round to the closest five. So there are slight discrepancies, but certainly we can make a footnote comments about that and and where that may show up in smaller data sets.
Yeah, thank you. I just find that sometimes, you know, it's materially materially misleading when I see numbers that I can't, and I I have my degree in math. So if I can't do it, then I don't know if anybody else can, so but thank you if you can make those changes.
Yeah, we definitely can.
So just a footnote.
Absolutely.
So can we just, I have, maybe I'll just keep a running note of things, so if we're going to consider approving this today just with those those changes, I'll try and keep a note of of those.
Yes.
I don't think there's going to be that many of them, so I don't think it's going to be that difficult. Are there any other questions of the applicant at this time? Councilor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair, and I thank you for the presentation. It's a beautiful report. I'm I'm very impressed with all the work that was done, and I I love statistics. So thank you for all the numbers and the updated numbers. I wanted to ask a question about student housing and how they reflect on the on the key findings with respect to the anticipated need over the next five years of the one zero, one bedroom, two bedrooms, plus three bedrooms. How it could, is there any way to break out from those numbers what's needed for student housing, in particular for not only to UVIC, I I the report suggests that there was no data for Camosan College. But I do note that Camosan College's master plan on the Oak Bay portion of their property, which is currently a parking lot, that's where they plan on putting hundreds of student housing loca- rentals, which I was very, very pleased to see that that they've included that in their current strategic plan. And I also understand from UVIC that they're also in the process of arranging to build student housing. I don't know whether it'll be on the Oak Bay side or the Sanage side, so I'm not sure who can lay claim to it yet, but let's just say UVIC, we can, we're all one big happy family, that that we do have some student housing coming on, hopefully within the next five years, depending on whether the money can flow. That would be optimistic. But the fundamental question is, can you break down or give me some idea of the anticipated need? How much of that is student housing, please?
Or can you provide that breakdown? Yes?
So those population projections, and and Matt might be able to speak to this from other work that he's done, but those population projections are based on the community overall. So our analysis does have an age component based on Oak Bay's current demographics, but we wouldn't be able to break it out into student housing per se. That's more of a qualitative information source that we collected through our conversations with Camosan and University of Victoria.
But certainly, I think, this is a partial answer to your question, because I think Marina rightly notes that we don't necessarily break out student versus non-student in the young age cohort, for example, but the age projection does have a breakdown of households led by, say, nineteen to twenty-five-year-olds, which would align with the student age population. It just doesn't break out working age versus student age. So I think it'll it'll provide part of the answer, but it won't provide the full answer, but there certainly is some age-based information in the projection work.
Thank you. I do note that we are a bit of an anomaly, being a municipality of eighteen thousand people that have two post-secondary institutions totaling about thirty-five thousand students. So it's not very many municipalities in this situation. Any other questions? Councilor Zelka?
That's fine.
Councilor Patterson, did I see your hand up? No? Councilor Neen? No? No, no other questions of council at this time? I don't think I have any particular questions. I maybe just worthwhile for us to be, and I'll invite public to come forward in a moment to to ask, do they have any questions of the consultants or of staff? Mr. Anderson, is just maybe review a little bit about what this is being used for. So it's you did at the beginning of this, it's it is a it's a statistical piece, and next stages after this are where we start taking this data and starting to do some of the questions, I think asked around the table here, what do we do about student housing and those other questions? Maybe you can just review for us what the what the plan going forward is over the next two years.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, as as Marina had mentioned, the the Housing Needs Report represents a baseline in terms of housing needs and gaps in the community. It provides us with basically one component of of information in terms of us moving forward and looking at our housing options. As as far as the approach that we have direction from council to take through strategic priorities is that we are looking at basically a series of initiatives around access to diverse housing options in the community. We've characterized this as a housing framework, piece of work that we'd undertake. The Housing Needs Report, it was really the the beginning component. We've undertaken or commenced work on a secondary suites study that would look at one element of housing options for the community. And then subsequently, our intent is to look at neighborhoods and look at infill housing options in in different housing forms from duplexes to triplexes and others as a as another initiative for us over the next year and 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 two-year timeframe. And then finally, around this, we would also look at our village areas and look at housing options that we might pursue in in Oak Bay to to in part to try and address what we've identified through the Housing Needs Report for housing demand in the in the community, but in in part also to determine what Oak Bay thinks it it wants to manage in terms of its its growth around housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions at this time? No, we'll come back here later for a motion for recommendation to council. Maybe you may have a seat. I'll just invite, is there anybody from the audience that wishes to come forward? We have some correspondence that was received. Yeah, we have one gentleman from the audience.
Let's go over here.
Sure. If I could just ask, so for the member of the audience wish to come forward, you just come to the seat over here, and you can ask questions or make comments. And you've been here before, of course, but if the usual thing, if you just state your name and municipality of residence and write down your name so we have the correct spelling, and you can address your comments through me.
I'm Dan today. Good evening, all. My name is Steve Belker, and I live beside Quimper Playground.
That microphone a little closer to you if we can to, maybe we can't. Oh, that's that's perfect. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Belker.
I have supplied council with two fact-filled written submissions in the correspondence link of the agenda. As I'm a better writer than I am a speaker, I'm not going to read these out to this meeting. I suggest that the home audience find my submissions and read them for themselves. One of the submissions is a Housing Needs Legislation FAQ, FAC, which explains to the public the provincial strategy which now requires housing reports from each community. I wrote it for distribution at the recent Housing Needs Report Open House. However, my offer was declined. The other submission pertains to the draft of Oak Bay's Housing Needs Report being presented today. It points out that since the report is still still contains glaring omissions, my recommendation to this meeting is that not go forward until those omissions have been remedied. In that submission, I've described just three of the significant omissions, each one of which is important enough to justify sending this report back to the project team. The first omission is the need to explain that Oak Bay is a desirable retirement destination community with national and international interest, and therefore, housing is controlled by external free-market forces. Since the end users of this report will include senior government agencies, who may have little understanding of Oak Bay's special circumstances, such circumstances as this must be identified in this report. The second omission is the need to explain one of Oak Bay's key challenges when it comes to climate mitigation, the risks to households living on our flood plains. This is a housing issue. The mitigation is a housing need, and we have a working group already in place to advise this project on climate action issues. And yet, this report is notifying this key challenge to senior governments or their agencies. The third omission is the need to explain Oak Bay's challenges when it comes to one of her demographic anomalies, that a wide majority of seniors and near seniors are women. The effect on housing trends due to the negative convergence of the gender issues of aging, health, ability, and finances has not been identified to senior governments or their agencies, even they even though they need advance warning of these issues. I identified these gender issues using my Oak Bay Census Digest. A lot of work, but I did it. All the census information and more, and cross-referenced and commented, everything you ever wanted to know about Oak Bay is in my digest. I identified these gender issues using my Oak Bay Census Digest. My digest is exactly what the name implies. It is data supplied by Stats Canada, CMHC, and other agencies, which has been digested to make it more usable and less redundant. It therefore lends itself to identifying local trends, anomalies, convergences, and issues. It represents dozens and dozens of hours of my time. At the last cow regarding this report, I offered my own notes, such as this digest, to the project and offered my expertise to help them analyze them. But since that meeting, the only communication from staff has been a rejection of my application to volunteer as a commissioner. I assumed this to mean that the project has their own methodology for identifying convergent trends, including the negative convergence of four gender trends. But that would mean that it was omitted from this report by the project team because they decided that it was not important enough to bother informing the community, other governments, and their agencies. Either that, or the team were instructed to ignore gender issues by management. Why? For what possible reason? The first step to getting help from senior governments and their agencies to remedy our housing problems is to identify those problems in this report. This report is a provincially legislated vehicle of transparency for identifying local housing needs. Significant omissions are therefore significant barriers to transparency and therefore to their timely remedies. Significant omissions in the final version, such as how converging gender issues will negatively affect thousands of Oak Bay women as they age, will open the project up to questions of competency. If such omissions were consciously made, then there also will be questions of negligence and hidden agendas. If council votes to receive this Housing Needs Report while knowing there is even one significant omission, then the culpability is transferred from the project to council. That's all. Does anybody have any questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Belker.
I can answer Mr. Zelka's question. Your question was, does the mortgage?
You just address your comments through me, it'd be appreciated.
Oh, sorry. Your worship, I would like to answer Mr. Zelka's question. Mr. Zelka, your question was, does the forty percent without mortgage include lines of credit? That's from Census Information, and on my analysis and my digest, I realized that because Census Information is a self-assessment, everybody assesses themselves, then those people who know that their line of credit is actually a registered mortgage and that their tax deferral is actually a registered mortgage, they would have put it down as a registered mortgage. Other people would have not. So therefore, you really cannot trust the forty percent number. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belker. I might just distill a bit of that into a couple of questions, if it's all right, either to the to our consultant or to staff. Things like identifying sort of the nature of the community, we have some some statements that we have in some of our other sort of general reports, identifying Oak Bay as a seaside community, sort of a retirement, et cetera. Is that something that would normally that should be included in this sort of report? Or is that is this more of a statistical body of work? That was raised as a as a as a as a comment about not being included. I'm just curious if that was something that would normally be included in here.
Matt can also provide some context on other reports we've done. It's not a required thing. We'll often provide context around the community that we're we're studying with these reports. We do make a number of statements about Oak Bay, both in the introduction and also in the statistics where they are, Oak Bay is at, you know, quite different than the region overall. So we do call attention to that. If obviously, like, the level of context around a community, it it will depend from report to report. But we did try to provide some of that because this report is for Oak Bay. Matt, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I I think you've summarized it well, Marina. It does vary from community to community and and the intention of the project or the intention of these reports is to situate the local context housing-wise for the community that we work in. So certainly, where relevant contextual information is provided by the communities that we work with, we try to include those in reports. But it's there's, this is, this is still kind of an emerging template the province has provided us with. So we work with the data sets that they provide and work with the data sets that we're aware of to supplement those, and then we may do policy reviews and engagement around that. But it's still very much a an evolving sort of type of project, and I'd anticipate that in another five years, there will be a bit more of an accepted approach. But at this point, Oak Bay is one of the first and leading communities in the province to have taken advantage of the grant to to take research. So we're trying to make sure that we've completed all the provincial requirements and done above and beyond that and included the important context that that our clients and our communities feel should be important.
Okay, thank you. I'll just ask another question. You can move the microphone back and forth as you see fit. The other question raised about the 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 integration of climate and potential climate impacts, sea level rise and seaside communities, those sorts of things on 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 as as part of this Housing Needs Report. We obviously consider that as part of other pieces, but is that something that what you you would see as part of a Housing Needs Report? And and how would that be integrated into the into the information provided?
Matt, do you want to go first?
Mr. Johnson, I think she's she's putting the microphone back in front of you. Mr. Johnson, I think she's, she's putting the microphone back in front of you.
It is, climate considerations are obviously part and parcel of pretty much every planning or elements of planning and urban planning that we take on now. That being said, tackling in any meaningful way climate change as a component of this report is probably quite well beyond the scope of what the province is looking for and certainly the data that's available. I would suggest that climate as a consideration is, is much more vital to be considered during the, say, OCP planning phases when, when you are talking about flood plains or sea level rise. So much like transportation, which is another, another related issue that is often raised when we're doing these housing needs assessments, we do try to take note of related issues, but to explore them in any meaningful way through this process simply isn't possible given the resources and would probably do a disservice to the issue itself to try to do it, to try to tackle climate change through, through a housing report. So I would certainly suggest that, that it's an important related issue, but I think it deserves its own, its own exploration through other planning or research opportunities.
Thank you very much. And just, last question here was really just sort of the, there was some discussion around the, the assignment of, impact of, of gender issues on, on housing and pieces of that nature. Maybe you can just address that in terms of, is that, is that, at what point is that being considered as part of this? Or are you looking at, there was some identification of some of the single families and things of that, those sorts of gender issues in this report now? But in terms of the older aging demographic and those aspects, perhaps you can just touch on that piece as well?
Maybe I'll start, Matt, and you can add anything if you think I'm missing it. Yeah. I think gender is a very important factor when it comes to housing as it comes, is in many different aspects of, you know, quality of life in a community. We, the, I will say the gender and aging issue is something that many communities are seeing because as demographics get older, the population ratio of men to women tends to change. With gender in this report, we really were looking to the stakeholder workshops to identify issues like that. And it didn't come up as, it likely is a very important issue, and I'm not discounting that at all. I think it's an important one that the community member raised. But it's not something that came up strongly in the workshops that we did. So, and we did talk to folks serving seniors and older demographics. So that's why it wasn't emphasized in this report as it might have otherwise been if it had been raised by the, by the stakeholders that we, we spoke to. I don't know if Matt. Matt, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I can, I can add a little. I think what you said is, is correct, Marina. I think the other thing is, is, you know, we, we do recognize that these reports are intended to be quite high level. And the level of detail that the member of the public is, is referencing would again probably be worthy of a research report unto itself, a real, real deep dive into specifics of seniors' issues. And, you know, we recognize that there are some limitations in the data provided. We're actually working closely right now, just, just starting with the BC, BC Society for Women's Transition Houses, to identify opportunities for more gender-based data to fund their way into these reports. But at the moment, at the moment, the, the level of depth or research required to really drill down into this issue is kind of beyond the scope of this. This is intended to be quite high level. And as Marina said, you know, the issue of seniors' housing was definitely prevalent, both in terms of the, the numbers and the, the demographics that we're seeing, both in historical trends and population projections into the future, but also through the stakeholder engagements. And I think, you know, when it comes to addressing this issue, typically, we, we as consultants and often local governments who are looking to the nonprofit sector to know their client base and to be able to express the needs of some of that client base. So often, we rely on them, as we did with the stakeholder engagement, to feed us the information for these, these reports.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's all the, sort of the, sort of general questions I took out of that. I guess there was one also, just a, a comment about you know, applications and appointments to committees and commissions. And I just would point out, A, it's council's job to appoint, not staff's, and also that really, we're, we're not really appointing any net new members at this point. Just so, just so the whole community knows that. We are doing a new intake for committees and commissions in the summer. But we're waiting until we have revised terms of, terms of reference and policies and procedures bylaws to guide that so that we're appointing people under those new procedures and, and terms of reference. Just so you, Mr. Belker asked, raised that issue. So I just want to let you know that it's not, really, nobody was appointed new unless there was a, a gap attached at this point that needed to meet for quorum. All right, we're back to this table. Is there any other members of the audience wish to come forward and speak at this time to these? No? Mr. Belker, you're welcome to come back one more time, as you wish.
There seems to be a misunderstanding here with the, the project, between the project and myself. I don't expect the Housing Needs Report to explore the problems of our being a destination or our having flood plains or our having senior gender issues. What I expected to do is identify them, to state, yes, we have this problem, and yes, we have this problem, and yes, we have this problem. It should be in this report that we have these problems. We know they're there. So the problems do not disappear. They don't get forgotten about. And also, for when senior agencies, like federal agencies and, in the case of seniors, and provincial agencies in case of, in the case of flood plains, so that they are also aware that we do have those problems. I'm not talking about exploring them. I'm not talking about anything like that. I'm just saying they should be identified in this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belker. Anybody else wish to come forward? No. All right. So now we're back at this table for good. There's no motion on the table at this point. But if there's, if, if there's any questions, I'll take those. If not, we'll take a motion on the table, and we can speak to the motion. Well, take, take a motion?
I will move that council receive the 2020 Housing Needs Report in accordance with Section 585 of the Local Government Act.
There a seconder? Moved and seconded. I have misplaced my notes in terms of the, the two additional points. One was just adding the, the numbers of total rentals and total owned houses in the one graph, and then noting the, the rounding to the nearest five at Statistics Canada and the other to explain the, the lack of addition. Okay? Do you think we need to include that in the motion, Ms. Hopkins? Or would you prefer to have that on the record so that the revised report?
Your worship, I think that we can make those amendments, and then we'll be bringing it forward again to council for official consideration of receipt at the upcoming council meeting on the 24th of February.
Okay. Good. So the, the motion as it stands works. It'll just come forward with those amendments. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. So the motion's on the table. We have a mover and a seconder. Counselor Appleton, did you want to speak to the motion?
Thank you, your worship. I, I just want to reiterate to, to the members of public that are, that are paying attention to the process, that have monitored the process, just to reiterate very clearly that this is not a policy document. This is information for council's decision-making. And I think that when other topics are brought up that are, that are supportive to the housing topic, those are legitimate and valued. I think it, it underscores the importance of council considering many different factors. If they're looking at how the OCP is implemented and how housing is considered overall, this is not the, the be-all and end-all of all information that council should consider with respect to housing, but it is an important piece. So I, I'm very much appreciative for the content that it contains. There's some in, very, very interesting and very informative content in it, almost sort of revelatory towards what the, what, what is going on in the community. I'm just very much, very much in support of this going forward. I would draw, I know that council has reviewed the material that's come out of the open house. I attended the open house. I think most of council did as well. I was very pleased to see the number of citizens that were engaged in that process. And what I hear from the, what I hear by reading the comments from the community at that open house is very much to get on with things, that this is one tool to help inform council's decision-making. As staff has rightly pointed out, there's a detailed process underway with respect to housing. This is important information to receive, and we're moving forward in the right direction. So I'm, I'm very pleased with it.
Thank you, counselor. Any other comments this time? Counselor Green, then Zelka, then Nay?
Well, through you, Mayor. I just want to thank the consultants for their work. I appreciate the input of the public as well. But I'm especially informed by the, the public feedback from the open house, which I also attended. And I would agree with Counselor Appleton. This is key information. And this is the first time, frankly, that Oak Bay has had a relatively clear picture of what housing needs look like in Oak Bay. So I think this is an informative piece. And again, I agree with Counselor Appleton. It will not form policy, but it will provide a foundation of information on which we can draw when we're going forward with a housing framework or a housing plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Counselor Zelka, then Counselor Nay?
Thank you very much, Chair. Very much do appreciate this report and the data set. Fascinating. I appreciated all the comments from the public, both pro and con. And, and I, I heard the concern of, of many in the community about, a concern about the character of the community and, and how can we protect that? So I, I appreciate the data, and I appreciate the fact that we have a good, a lot of good work for us to try and, and find a way through with all of this data going forward. I'm also very grateful for that the province provided this opportunity and, and the funding agency as well to help pay for it all. So with that in, in mind, I did want to point out that regarding the gender issue, I looked, did a quick look up of the 2016 Census. Unfortunately, the numbers were rolled up. Number of men per, per age, what was it, 54 to 99? There was 54 men per 100 women or something like that. But number of men for, of centenaries, there's only about 18 men per 100 women that are over 100 years old. So I guess, for those who are lucky enough to live that long, I guess you could call that a gender, quite a gender concern as the, as the men die off much too young. Something, some reality we have to deal, sort of contend with. I, when I speak a second time, and I will be asking to speak a second time, I may have an amendment to put forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zelka. I have Counselor Nay and then Patterson?
Yeah, I just, some general comments. I, I really appreciate this piece of work. It builds on the OCP and allows us to move forward from the vision that's been articulated for this community by providing a great deal of data around our demographic profile, the housing profile, the population projections, et cetera, and provide some really good detailed information to support us to move forward, to find ways to create more diversity in housing options in this community. I think that's really absolutely clear. And I totally recognize that we need to do that with the concerns that have been expressed by the community around the, the worry about what changing zoning may look like for the community as well as ensuring that we retain the, the essential character of this community. So really, I want to thank staff for all the work that they've done and the consultants for providing us a really nice piece of work and being so responsive to the input from the council. And thank the community for all their input as well.
Thank you, Counselor Nay. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the consultants for the report. I, I do believe that it, it helps inform what we want to do for our housing plan in Oak Bay. But I, I do share some of the concerns that I, I heard expressed around the council table just about some of the data that is perhaps not as straightforward and clear in the report as, as perhaps we would, would like it to be. I also, as I'm following this in some of the other municipalities, I noticed that that problem is shared in other communities too, and that they are perhaps using this as a, as a starting point and then drilling down by getting other data. Because when they're, when they're finding sometimes that there's conflicting information, perhaps between regional reports and the local reports and what they're getting done in the housing plans, they're not, the confidence is not as strong in all areas. And so we may perhaps, as we drill down in this, decide that they're to embellish the information that we have in this report by getting ancillary data from, from other sources to help guide the information as we go forward.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Counselor Breathwaite?
Thank you, and through you, Chair. Thank you for the report. I'm just, I just want to reiterate that just because I ask questions on the numbers doesn't mean that I, I don't agree with, with the report and don't think it's a good report. I just know that for me and probably others in the community, it's important that those numbers make sense. So thank you for, for rectifying that, and thank you for the report. I reiterate some of the comments from around the table, that it's a, it's a well-written report. And if we can just get that a little bit fixed, it would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Breathwaite. I'll just say my two cents. I think Counselor Zelka wanted to speak again. I appreciate all the feedback that we've had in the open house and through the written submissions and, and here today. I just, we have a lot of work ahead of us, right? We have to take, this is a very baseline of information. It is not all the information, to be fair. And at the end of the day, the statistics mean only so much. At the end of the day, we have to use our wisdom, and we have to draw wisdom from the community, and we're going to have to make some decisions about what, how we're going to set our policies. We can't address all the needs in this report. Let's be frank, we can't. So we're going to have to make some decisions about where we're prioritizing. That's really our job. So I, well, is it, is it meet every possible ramification of every statistic? No. You know, would I, do I have some musings that I'd be like more information? I'm sure. But I think it's a, it's an important step for us to receive it, move on, and get to the, our real job, which is getting on to the policy piece and acknowledge that we're never going to have perfect amounts of information or be able to achieve all the intended goals at the end of the day. So I'm based on all of that and the, and the corrections being made. And I, I think this is a much better document for this iterative process. I know it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a pain. But I think we're, at least clarity of data is, is important, and we're getting much closer to that now. And so I appreciate all the work that's been done on this by staff and by the, by our consultants. So thank you very much. And Counselor Zelka, you had a, something you wanted to raise again?
Thank you very much, Chair. I wanted to propose a, a small amendment, although for me, it's a rather important one. So let me just sort of phrase it appropriately. So whereas the student data appears to be not well-formed within the report, excellent report, but not well-formed within the report, and whereas this is, there is no policy direction within this document and is not intended to be policy direction, and whereas this report should not be characterized as a housing framework, therefore, I wish to propose that the following two words be added to the end of the, of the amendment. Oh, sorry, excuse me, one more whereas. Whereas Oak Bay is leading the, the Housing Needs Report approach, we're ahead of the curve, and that's an uncomfortable place for me to be. So therefore, I propose the following two words be added, which is to add the words "without prejudice" to the end of the existing motion. And so that the motion would then read, oh, I just lost it. The motion would then read, that council received the 2020 Housing Needs Report in accordance with Section 585 of the Local Government Act without prejudice.
I'm going to refer that to staff. Well, I guess I have to go to a, is there any seconder for that amendment? Give it a couple more seconds. Anybody wish to second that? Okay, it's not, not, not tabled. So the motion to amend fails without a seconder. So we're back to the main motion, which is, the motion as written out here. Any further discussion, members of committee? No. So the recommendation to council to receive it, the receipt would happen at, presuming at the next council meeting, assuming those changes could be made. Is that the plan from staff?
February 24th.
February 24th, yes. So next, next full council meeting. All right, I will then call the question. All those in favor? For receipt? Opposed? Counselor Zelka opposed? We have one more item on the agenda, which is the tree protection bylaw. Thank you so much for coming out here today. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for, for... Thank you so much for coming out here today. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for being here. And take care of your child. Get some sleep. Yes. And, all right, yes, good luck. Take care. And if you don't mind, we'll just talk over top of you here as we go through pieces. We have the tree protection bylaw here and I, we have Mr. Heidley, the manager of parks, to introduce this.
Thank you, Chair, and through you. I will mention that to start, that there was a very interesting article in the New York Times today, what's better than planting a trillion trees? Protecting the ones that you have. But putting that aside, the urban forest strategy was endorsed by council in 2017. And in the strategy, it identified five main objectives, which were to protect and enhance the canopy of Oak Bay to approach forty percent by 2045, support a healthy, well-adapted and diverse tree population, manage the urban forest for community climate change adaptation, strengthen natural heritage to support healthy ecological systems and biodiversity, and engage and partner with the community to build stewardship of the urban forest. And one of the main objectives or recommendations of the urban forest strategy was to amend the tree protection bylaw to help support those five objectives. And that bylaw draft came to council for consideration on November eighteenth of last year. And it was at that time that council directed the amendments be made to the bylaw and requested that some community consultation be undertaken prior to council reading, considering readings of the bylaw. I always like to mention that one of the reasons that we initially took the urban forest strategy was to begin to address our understanding that we're beginning to deal with a matured, over-mature urban forest throat, the municipality. And about eighty-six percent of our tree loss numbers, that's trees over sixty centimeters in diameter, are lost on private land because they're dead, diseased, or dying. Only about fourteen percent are development-related. So staff has subsequently made the amendments to the bylaw four, seven, four, two, and specifically to include the provisions to, for trees of indigenous significance and to provide options for delegation and scalability, effectively reducing the security requirements for minor building applications, and to reduce the length of time that security deposits are held for replacement trees that are dead, diseased, or dying. In addition to that, as under council's direction, an open house was held on the twenty-ninth of January, just a short while ago, which provided an overview of the draft bylaw. Thirty-five people attended. And we have nineteen community questionnaires that we received back that provided us some feedback. And I would say that generally, the majority of the feedback that we received was supportive. Some of the main priorities of breaking down in order of significance show that the most important concerns expressed by the people were protecting a broader range of trees as number one, setting tree canopy cover targets in the bylaw was number two, significant trees was number three, replacement for trees that were dead, diseased, or dying were number four, and protecting a more diverse variety of trees was number five. And some additional comments that we received in no particular order of significance were double the fines, double the fines in the schedule, that the tree bylaw is a direct assault on freedoms of artistic expression, that trees and urban forests are the solution to our climate-related challenges, don't forget to allow light for urban gardeners, planting trees would reduce my quality of life, block light to my fruit, and reduce my opportunities for sustainability. And Oak Bay Council should trust residents to replant new trees and replace old trees as needed. So in regards to the bylaw amendments, we amended section one and six. So the modification does include trees of indigenous significance. We also made an amendment to eleven point two, which is the number of trees to be included in the calculation will be determined through the tree management plan as prepared by an arborist and approved by the manager of park services as those trees that may be directly impacted by construction. So that gives some flexibility depending on the scale of the development to make some adjustments. And the $500 security deposit for tree replacement that is required for dead, diseased, and dying trees is reduced from three years, as it is for new builds, to one year. The bylaw does support two of the strategic priorities, as mentioned in the report, and that's enhance and promote the quality of life and sense of place and demonstrate leadership in fostering community health. So the two recommendations brought forward is that it be recommended to council to give, to consider giving three readings to the bylaw or provide another direction to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Heidley. Counselor Nay?
Thank you through you, Chair, to staff. Thank you, thank you very much for the revisions here. And also, overall, I mean, this just looks like a really good bylaw to me that's going to encourage homeowner responsibility for the trees in a way that will benefit all of us. So I really appreciate that. I have a specific question about one of the changes that you've made for us since we last met around this. And it has to do with the $500 deposit for trees that have replacement trees on homeowner properties. And I want you, based on council request, you moved it from a deposit for, from three years to one year. And so I just want to ask you a couple of questions around the implication of that change that was asked to be done. So do you see that that will weaken that, that part of the policy in any way, given that it's a shorter timeframe, to be incentivized to take responsibility for the care of the tree? That's one question.
Mr. Heidley?
Through the chair, thank you. Counselor Nay? I don't think so. One year is, from my perspective, would be a sufficient length of time to appraise the tree and see that it is beginning to establish itself well. And I'm supportive of it in the sense that when you're dealing with a development site, you're often dealing with disturbed topography, where trees may take a longer time to establish themselves. Usually, when the tree is dead, diseased, or dying, it's removed and there's an opportunity to replace. So the soil profile is a bit more supportive.
So I was just wondering, thank you for that. I was just wondering through your chair. So let's say the tree doesn't survive that first year. Would the homeowner have, and it was just for circumstances beyond what the homeowner was able to oversee, would there be an opportunity if it was so desired by the homeowner for them to try, have another go with another tree? So as not to lose the $500 deposit?
Mr. Heidley?
Yes, Counselor Nay, and we do have, we have had that situation come up on development properties where the trees have failed. And we have given the homeowner the opportunity to try again. But we still hold the money for the duration of the specified time.
So that one year would start up again at that point, the new tree? Is that right?
That's correct.
Right. So the idea really is to, it's not to punish, it's really just to enable the, and encourage responsibility for the care of the trees on the homeowner's property.
That's correct. The success of the urban forest really depends such a great deal on getting trees onto private property. And looking at the numbers of tree loss, this is trees over sixty centimeters, we're well over thirteen hundred trees since we've been keeping track since 2013. And those are all trees that are twenty-four inches or larger. At least fifty percent or sixty percent are gary oaks themselves. So the numbers are, I wouldn't refer to them as startling because when you look at the urban forest canopy cover overall, the decline is somewhat slow, but it's beginning to accelerate. And this is, this is just one of the mechanisms to encourage people to get trees back on the land and for the community good.
Counselor Brithwaite?
Thank you, and through you, Chair. Yeah, thanks so much, Mr. Heidley. This is a great report and it's a great rewrite of the bylaw. I know we've been waiting a little while to get to this. And so it's nice, I'm sure, for you to have this kind of ticked off and finished. Almost finished as soon as we accept it all. I have a couple of questions in regards to the fees and security schedule as well, mainly Schedule B on the minimum fines. And that would be, is this in line with other municipalities, the fines that they have? Or where does it kind of fall as far, if you know, as far as what fines other municipalities charge for similar offenses? And then I have one more question after that.
Mr. Heidley?
Through the chair, thank you, Counselor Brithwaite. It's middle of the pack and most of the comparators were done with the larger municipalities in the greater Vancouver area.
Thank you. And just a follow-up to that, because I know that in the past we've had situations where some of the larger properties perhaps have not chosen to get a permit to cut down a tree and have cut down four trees, protected trees. And so then would only have a very minimal amount of a fine to pay in comparison to what that, the value to the municipality would be of those trees. But the value to them, it was inconsequential based on the amount of money they were spending on their property. If it was a $2 million house they were building or something. So what, how do we get, maybe you can explain how we get more money if there's a blatant disregard to the rules like that? Because I know that there is a process that we can go through.
Mr. Heidley?
Through the chair. The maximum is $10,000 on private property. And that's provincially capped, that's my understanding. $2,500 as an example of removing a protected tree is the minimum fine. It can compound itself if it was removed over two days, much like the incident that transpired on Cranmore, where there were multiple infractions of the bylaw over a two-day period. And hence was able to draw the fine up to $40,000. And that was a private property tree. That would be a rare case because most of the time, the infraction happens on a weekend or at a time when someone's not usually around. But I would say it's infrequent, or it's more and more infrequent. And I can't really remember, but I'm not saying that we're aware to all infractions of when that last happened.
Well, it's good to hear that it's going down. So thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Brithwaite. Counselor Green, then Zelka, then Appleton.
Through you, Mayor, to Mr. Heidley. Thank you very much. I know how important this is to the community. I know how many people have taken a long interest in this. And I know how much tremendous work you and others have put into this revision. I think it's really, I can't remember the quote, but it's something like, "You always make the enhancements to society that you know that you will never live to see." And I think this is really true for the urban forest strategy and tree bylaws. We're going to be planting trees as a community that we will never see mature. But that's what we should be doing, and especially in the context of climate change. And I think climate change may in fact change the attitudes of people towards preserving trees and green space. Because I think we saw in Australia with those fires, what that has done to the landscape. So I'm really pleased about this. And also to remind us that trees and green space are habitat also for animals. So thank you.
Counselor Zelka, then Appleton?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to staff. I'm very much in favor of the bylaw, looking forward to a quick passage. Just have a quick question regarding, I presume it will be in exemptions. When I lived on McNeil, I recalled every once in a while, B C Hydro or one of their contractors would come along and they'd be hacking and slashing at the tree to clear the wires. What's the process under this bylaw for the utilities to move forward and continue to do that necessary work, please?
Mr. Heidley?
Through the chair, thank you, Counselor Zelka. B C Hydro has overruled our bylaw. So it's provincially mandated that there has to be a three-meter clearance to the primary line. And unfortunately, some of the pruning that transpires, and I will let you know that South Oak Bay is up for contract next year. And some of the pruning is less than great. I will mention, though, that we have, and I'll use the Boca Cadbury Bay Development as an example, where we reached an agreement with B C Hydro where we were able to plant gary oak under the utility wires with our commitment to do the early training. So gary oak is one tree that you can shape over the wires very successfully and can let it grow within limits of approach because they require very little pruning as they begin to mature.
Thank you very much. All I can say is keep up the great work. Wonderful.
Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, and through you, Chair. It's a bit of an extension of the question that Counselor Nay asked earlier, which is if you have a tree, if we're holding that $500 deposit for the establishment of an existing tree, and obviously if you come back and it's dead, it's, they can get another shot at planting another replacement tree. Is, do you have provision in the bylaw to, if it's not quite dead, if it's looking like, it's not looking great, you know, you might need to check in on it again? Is there provision for you, under your authority, to sort of revisit that in a couple of months to see whether it is in fact established or whether it has in fact died? And that you could specify another tree to be replaced?
Through the chair, thanks, counsel. Yes, there would be flexibility there. What we don't want it to be is to be excessively rigid in regards to those type of scenarios that we know are going to arise.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Nope? I just, I have one, and it's similar to what the item I raised last time. And it just relates to how, first of all, let me just say, thank you so much. I think the original was great. This is better. The thought and detail that's gone into this shows in every phrasing. It's really a nicely written bylaw. I think it's important to remember is this, that the awareness piece of this is just as important as the specifics of the fines and everything else. And I think one of the things that this does, particularly the way it's laid out, even though it's a bylaw, it just helps value those natural assets in a way that makes people aware of the fact that these natural assets do have value and have to be protected. But on the flip side of that, they can, it can also become onerous and expensive at times. So I just, I had one thing. Under the, under the section eight point three, it talks about a type-two tree permit, which is for building permit type applications, new builds. And it talks, you know, need for a tree assessment report, a legal survey, security, completed checklist, tree management plan, et cetera. And they look under ten point four, which identifies those needs as being for the renovation, addition, or alteration of the exterior of an existing principal building. Which, again, my primary concern here is we absolutely want to make sure there's permits and trigger all of that. But it's a fairly expensive process to get that, that extent of work done for. So is there any way we can look at wording that highlights the fact that if it's an alteration to an outside of a building, but isn't, say, an addition, that that whole piece isn't triggered, that there's some mechanism in wording that could be brought in, I guess, within that, that would not trigger, say, the five or six or $10,000 worth of work for a homeowner if they're doing $2,000 or $3,000 worth on a home? Because to my mind, that's the biggest danger this bylaw has, frankly, is that for people doing minor work on a house are going to trigger this process that is going to become seen as onerous. And that'll drive a negative reaction to the bylaw as a whole. I'll give it to Mr. Heidley or Mr. Anderson, I guess, because it sort of touches on both the tree protection and the housing question.
Very good point, Chair. I'm going to I'm going to defer that to Mr. Anderson as it deals directly with an actual building application.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, through the Chair. I think there's probably some value in thinking a little bit about how we've worded the requirement for this to be applied. And that is that, it has been mentioned earlier that this is, bylaw's been amended to look at managing impacts on trees through construction. But another sort of approach might, to sort of further add to that, would be to look at perhaps removing the renovation and alteration components of the building permit in terms of this tree bylaw. And having the tree bylaw really just focus on the construction of a new building or the addition to a building, which are your more significant pieces of work that would basically invoke that canopy requirement and then the security. So one suggestion would be that we modify Section 10.4 to basically, as I noted, to remove mention of renovation and alteration to the exterior of a building and just leave you with the construction of a new building and the addition to an existing principal building as the building permits that would invoke basically the requirements that you see further in this bylaw. Another component to that would be, if I recall, the schedule to the bylaw also does make reference to new principal building exterior renovation, so that if there were consideration to make such a change to the bylaw, we'd also want to remove that wording and just leave that canopy area requirements under the bottom of Schedule A, Section 10.6A. That actually refers to 10.4, so we don't really need to have the wording in terms of what type of building permit in the schedule there. So those are two suggestions that might be considered by Council.
Can I just, you said something there that concerned me though, is that I don't want to reduce the protection in any of those processes. So if they're doing work on the, for an alteration or renovation, the protection of the existing trees would still be in place, they would still have to take measures in the process of protecting existing trees. You're talking about, because the way I read this, this triggers the full enchilada, that you have to do the full tree protection bylaw, raise it to 45% coverage, et cetera. Is that, okay, so that's the...
Yes, so the suggestion here, I think, is that if we have minor alterations, like adding railings or stairs, that we wouldn't necessarily want to have all of the tree bylaw requirements kick in. But certainly if changes such as addition to the building impact a tree, then obviously we apply the new tree bylaw to that situation. Still protects the trees.
Okay. I mean, I have to say, I would feel more comfortable with those, that change to it. I do fear that if someone's doing a minor alteration, this kicks in and the staff don't have that clarity, that that would be a problem, but that's my particular take on the whole piece. So we don't yet have a motion on the table, so it's a bit of a moot point until we get a motion on the table.
I'll move that. I'd be recommend to Council to consider giving through meanings to Bylaw 4742, the tree protection bylaw.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. I'm not going to make a motion, but if anybody else wishes to consider the, I don't know how we'd actually word that, just to remove the words of renovation and alteration in Section 10.4 and any other related appendices?
Yeah, and the change of the schedule, just to remove the reference to exterior alteration.
Okay, well, I'll get correct wording and I'll see if anybody wants to make that motion. Ms. Hopkins?
Your worship, the motion could be that to strike out or for the renovation, addition or alteration of the exterior of an existing principal building and replace with or for an addition to an existing principal building in Section 10.4. And under Schedule A, Section 4, strike out new principal building exterior renovation.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Moving second. I should have already made my case for it, so I'm not going to say anything else, I think. It's really up to this body whether to see that's necessary. Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, your worship. I'm not in support of that amendment in its current format. The reason that I say that is I would like to see that narrow a little bit. I think that, and the reason I say that is because in terms of larger buildings, an external alteration or external modification could be of such, could be of a scope that could legitimately impact a significant number of trees. And so I'm talking specifically about those zoning bylaw zones which are listed under Sections D through H. Those sections, those zoning bylaws which do not cover single-family or duplex, basically those, not the residential or duplex zones, but specifically for multi-unit residential, commercial, institutional, larger buildings, which generally, if you're going to do an external modification, if all the windows or decks or et cetera have to be done, that's going to require scaffolding, that's going to require a lot of laydown, that's going to require a fairly large scope of work. So I understand the motivation behind not triggering for somebody's front deck on their residential property, but I do think that the language here, which refers to renovation, addition, or alteration of exterior, could potentially be fairly broad, significant in impact if you're talking about larger scale buildings. And I see examples of this around the broader community all the time. So I do have a concern about that component specifically.
I'll defer to staff on that one in terms of what the impact of that would be. Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe make the one through you Chair, the one clarification or point, and that is that those kinds of alterations, if they impact trees, this bylaw applies to them. So if there's an impact on trees of any activity, then the tree bylaw would come into play. The issue here is really, would an exterior alteration require you to now then achieve the canopy requirements? So there's sort of two parts to this, and I think the canopy requirement of Section 10.4 is probably the key point. It's not, as we put in 11.2, that any trees that are impacted by construction are going to be addressed by the tree bylaw. At least that's my understanding. So I think there's a distinction to be made. It's not that we would, it's just that we would not invoke the canopy requirement for an alteration.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. That helps my clarification as well. Any other discussion on that? So there's an amendment at this point. I do appreciate the concerns raised there and I can certainly see there's a, it's a fuzzy line a little bit in terms of some of that. If it's a major exterior renovation, that might have a point of volume that might kick it. When I was first thinking with this, I was thinking perhaps setting some sort of percentage of the size of the value of the building or something, but I think I'm getting too prescriptive for tree protection bylaw. So I will leave it to staff at this point, or to Counselor Appleton, can you speak again?
I might as well propose the amendment to the amendment with apologies to the Director of Corporate Services. I would like to see that that exemption be applied only to zoning bylaw zones A through D, or sorry, A through C, as described in Sections 10.4.
And that is just for those not following on, upland, single-family, and duplex zones only?
Your worship, I'm sorry to interrupt. We need to take care of the First Amendment first and then move to another amendment after.
Can we not amend the amendment?
We didn't call the question on the amendment.
We haven't, no. I'm used to having two levels down, but we only go to one, that's fine. No, his motion was not yet seconded. Original was seconded, yes. The amendment motion was seconded, so that is currently live on the table. We can deal with that and then we can go with the further amendments to that if Council so wishes. So Counselor Zelka?
Could it be read out loud, please?
Yes, I go back to Ms. Hopkins, who did a much better job of following the conversation than I did.
So the motion would be that under Section 10.4, we strike out or for the renovation, addition, or alteration of the exterior of an existing principal building and replace with or for an addition to an existing principal building. And under Schedule A, Section 4, we would strike out new principal building exterior renovation.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. And for the record, I actually don't have any objection to the suggested further amendment on that. I think that makes a certain amount of sense, but we are not dealing with that. We are dealing with the original amendment, which is to make those changes, to remove the process of achieving the full canopy cover and the tree management plan, et cetera, for minor things. So that's the, any other discussion? I'm seeing now, so this is the question on the amendment. So we have a motion on the floor for the recommendation to Council. This is now the amendment to make those changes as laid out by Ms. Hopkins. So I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed to Counselor Appleton and Counselor Patterson opposed, Counselor, so that passes. Now Counselor Appleton, this is appropriate time for you to make a motion.
Thank you, your worship, but as I understand it, and I will take some direction from the Director of Corporate Services, now that that amendment has passed, the language regarding renovation, addition, or alteration is now struck. So if I'm going to propose an amendment, I have to reintroduce that language back into the bylaw, is that correct?
No, the motion as it sits right now now reads as finalized, that the principal building for the addition of the existing principal building must submit to the manager, et cetera. So it just includes additions and of course, it maintains the principle, a new principal building or an addition to the main principal building. That's where it sits right now.
Right, understood. So I guess then my amendment is that that language be included, that the renovation, addition, or alteration of the exterior of an existing principal building falling within zoning bylaw zones D through H in Section 10.4 be subject to the requirements of Section 10.4. And I apologize about saying that very well.
Just for the sake of clarity, since we have a motion to amend the language passed here, would it be possible to just, for clarity of language, leave the language as amended for, but just clarify, it is for Sections A, B, and C, and that the original language be reinstated for the balance of those pieces? So there's two wording on there? I don't want to get too far into wordsmithing, I guess, but as long as we get the intent. Mr. Anderson? Before I get to the, Mr. Anderson, I just want to make sure that we're capturing.
Yeah, I mean, the concern that I think we might have is that we're then losing the application of the building permit for a new principal building and an existing principal building addition. We end up losing that with respect to the zones D to F. So I think we're probably going to have to recraft this in order to have, it's almost like we need to have two sets for the two sets of zones. Because we've basically said for the, basically the single-family, we don't think you'd need to include alterations and renovations, but for the multifamily and above, the suggestion, I think from the proposed amendment, is that you'd want to include alterations and renovations for those. So it's almost like we've now created two sets where we'd apply this canopy to. So it's perhaps gotten a little bit too complicated to...
No, fair enough. I actually, I completely agree with that. I think the important thing is this is a recommendation to Council, so we're going to actually get the wording of the bylaw at the Council meeting. So as long as we capture the intent here, it'll come with those changes to the Council meeting. I think that's the important thing to remember at this. So perhaps rather than, we have a mover motion, but it wasn't actually seconded, so we're still with yours, Counselor Appleton, perhaps the motion can be as simple as to add, you know, clear language that the renovation, addition, or alteration apply to zones D through H. And that might be enough for, I'm going to turn to staff.
I mean, if I may, you could probably just have two sections, like you could have, I'm talking about new construction and I'm talking about addition to a building as applied to zones A to Z.
Right.
Or, sorry, A to D, my apologies. And then you would put the full description that's in the draft bylaw now as applied to zones D to H or G.
So I'm just looking for wording of a motion here that captures that.
So it would just be, again, if you'd basically just, you'd have the full sentence as it exists now that applies to those last zones, D to H, and then the modified removing alterations and renovations that would just apply to A to D. So you can do that within that sentence.
I know, and we don't have to get the exact wording, I think is the point here today. So I think, Counselor Appleton, do you have some wording that you can think of that would capture this?
Well, first of all, thank you, your worship. First of all, I would withdraw my original amendment. And then I guess I would just ask the question. We haven't called the question on the bylaw overall. Would I be putting a, this would be a separate motion after that point, or would the motion come at this point?
So for clarity of everyone, the motion on the table is the original motion to recommend with one amendment, which is just to strike those two portions. As it sits right now, the bylaw applies to additions, to new builds or additions under all zoning.
So then I would make a motion to direct staff to modify the language in Section 10.4 such that renovation, addition, or alteration of the exterior of an existing principal building, where those buildings fall within zoning bylaw zone D through H. That, now I can't remember where I started with that. That when, craft language such that zoning bylaw zones D through H are included, include the component of renovation, addition, or alteration. And I apologize to the Director of Corporate Services.
One of these awkward moments where we all know what you mean and we want to get sure that it's recorded correctly in the minute so that we're not, there's no confusion when it comes back to Council.
I'm going to take a quick run at this on the fly, your worship. See if I get close. That Section 10.4 be further amended to read, "The owner of a parcel who applies for a building permit for construction of a new principal building or for the renovation, addition, or alteration of the exterior of an existing principal building, as per subsections D through H below, must submit to the manager of Park Services." And then the clause would go on from there. Was that the intention?
Yes, thank you.
I'm just going to get, before I get a second or get from Mr. Anderson, so...
Yeah, so that's just amending the portion to do with those latter zones, correct?
Correct.
Because I think we still need to have the first apply to the first set around.
Yes. That amendment's already passed to cover, so this is essentially adding a...
Yeah. Okay, I think we need to say that the first reduced requirement applies to those zones, the front zones, because we haven't mentioned those yet in any. So we'll just take care of that. I think that's all I need to clarify.
I think we're clear. And if we need modification, we can do it at the Council table, we have the wording. So I think we're fine here. So we have a mover and a, is there a second or, okay. Is there any discussion on that? Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair. I appreciate the intent and I appreciate the initiative. I'm afraid I can't support this. I believe it will encourage for these types of buildings as described, such as schools. The schools in our community, which I know have a great need for renovation, addition, and alterations. This will actually be a disincentive for them to do any upgrades to their buildings unless they can raise their target of their tree canopy to the requisite amount. So I'm afraid I can't support this as written. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zelka. I'll turn to staff because the community institutional is putting here at a lower rate at 30%. And I'm not sure, I believe there are some... And I'm not sure, I believe there's somewhere, way back when, we had some reports about where the current schools and, and institutional sites were sitting at. Is that, do we have a sense of how much they would have to add to their, to their lots?
Thank you, Mayor Murdock. No, but we, it, it would be an easy calculation, yeah, just using the municipal map, where, where we are in regards to that.
Okay, thank you, Counsel.
I, I'll just mention, one of the balances that we do have, and we do hear this from some of our, our parks. I'll give you the example of Nottingham Park, where we've planted a few memorial trees. We sometimes do hear from residents who, who use the park that leave the open space for, for play. So always a consideration in regards to some of those zoning. So it, it, the conversation can always take place, is, is, it's what can transpire.
Thank you, Counselor Zelka for raising that. Counselor Green?
My only, my only word of caution is that we don't make this so complex that we confuse the public at the end of the day, and that we, we try to make it as straightforward as possible, because I think if we confuse them, then, then we always run into problems. I, that's just a word of caution.
Yep. We have a motion on the floor at the moment, which is to add those back in for the Sections D through H. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Zelka opposed? So that passes. So the final wording will come back to us on February 24th, we hope. And I think that's the end of our meeting. Oh, we have to call the question now. That's right. Sorry, we had the amendments on the table. Hi, I'm losing track. Yeah, Counselor, actually, we're back on the, the motion now as amended. Counselor Brithwaite?
Thank you. And through you Chair. Just a quick question, Mr. Heidley, around significant trees. I noticed in Sec, Schedule D, that there are nine significant trees in Oak Bay right now, and I know that we've talked a little bit about getting more trees on the significant register, and if, just if you could just touch on that, if, if we're, I know it's a little bit off topic, but I was just curious about where we're at, if we're kind of going down that road to get more significant trees on the, on the schedule.
Mr. Heidley?
Certainly, through the Chair. Thanks, Counselor Brithwaite. There are many more trees that are worthy to be on the significant tree list in Oak Bay. Many, many. I know that there have been members of the public, or members of the community that have already begun to collect trees that be, would be worthy of, of nomination. I actually was a member of the Sanage Significant Tree Committee. And the way it worked there was that the homeowner had to consent. That's not always the case, though. I mean, a tree could be deemed significant without the homeowner's consent, but most of the time, the homeowner would be more than supportive of having a tree recognized. Once a tree is recognized, it is protected under the bylaw in perpetuity. And there's in numerous trees that have all, all kinds of various interests that attach to them throughout, throughout the district that are worthy.
Thank you. Perhaps you and I can talk more about that later. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brithwaite. Any other discussion? We have the main motion as amended on the floor right now. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, then opposed. Need a motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, then opposed. Thank you.